Call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Hampton Board of Select and the Board of Health being held at Townhouse Octarian February fourteenth, Valentine's Day, 2022, six P M. This meeting is being conducted in person remotely using video commerce technology as approved by Governor Baker's March twenty twenty emergency. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
Let leaders. The United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is anyone recording the meeting other than ourselves? Please indicate some way. Seeing none, hearing none. Let's see, do you have any minutes? Uh, the first item on we had on our agenda was the Hampton School Committee. They were scheduling conflicts that'll they'll be here next uh next Tuesday. Because the first is President's Day, so they'll be here Tuesday, twenty second. Which brings us to the police budget. Which we talked a little bit about last week. Alright, let's. Let's start with. The. F Y twenty two. Appropriation. Okay. So, an article, so on the special town meeting, so the hundred thousand is fine. The. Where did you get the one oh four, one million forty three thousand seven thirty three? Because the town meeting appropriated one hun- one million six thousand.
So we went back again today and pulled those figures off of the.
Took them off of Cliffs.
Cliffs, uh.
What is.
The accountant's paper. And this was the new, this was the new um. Figures up. In fact.
Yes.
And I just, and I just noticed in this, this piece here, this paper here, like, like you said, we're, we're off still, which I, I don't understand. That's what we pulled, and that's what we.
Well, you should be getting the minutes from Eva, because she would have the certified minutes from the town meeting.
So in years previous, we've always pulled them from Cliffs.
They've never been changed. I have. But those are the figures that we have in our line items.
Alright, well, let's see, hold on.
I think.
The only other difference is the incentive, career incentive, correct?
The career incentive and also um. Career center and. There's one other one too. The equipment, I think, was eighty seven hundred.
Okay, we got nine, nine zero six nine.
Yeah.
Those, that was for the cell phones.
So the cell phones were put into this one in the fiscal year twenty two? Well. At the uh. Special town meeting, when the, when the, when the contract was, the new union contract was agreed upon. We have the nine zero six nine that we added, it was eighty seven, and we have a nine zero six nine that was.
Yeah, you can't go back and add it.
That's the number voted at town meeting, okay? Can you increase that number, I guess, based on. No, no, these are what happened at the meeting, and that's.
Special town, we're right here, okay, special town meeting, so the special town meeting, the warrant. Okay, the special town meeting, it was voted. The. Adjusted revised, adjusted revised was one million, one million six thousand two seventy eight thirty eight on the salaries. The career incentive was seventy nine thousand three hundred nineteen seventeen. And the um. Equipment was eighty seven. I guess, yeah, I guess, okay, eighty seven ninety, let me see. Yeah.
Yeah.
Eighty seven hundred.
Yeah.
That's, I put the chart up there.
Yeah.
I put the revised O two next to the last column.
Right, that's what was voted on.
Right.
I mean, the only reason that's important is so we can start dealing with the percentage zero.
Right, sure, I understand.
So, figure that out. I don't know where the forty three, oh, the seven thirty three comes from, the one million forty three comes from, or the, or the eighty five. Alright, that's that, so we gotta figure that out. Then, so then. So, then, so the one million, the one million one hundred sixty thousand sixty eight. Right? That includes. The, the percentage increase for the officers. Right? The education, the uh. A new position. Right? And, and a new position of a resource officer.
So I think there was a misunderstanding on the resource officer. We, we currently have an officer that's trained as a school resource officer. The um request is to backfill him, and he goes over to, to the school resource, we're looking for eight hours a week. To have him backfilled, so he's going to be going off shift, he's going to be working in the school, so it's not for a whole position, it's for a replacement, a replacement cost of that officer. That goes over to the school. Which that, that is in the uh second page of our handout.
Is that what, is that what we've done in the past?
So, when we have had a school resource officer, yes, that officer would go off over um, like. John had mentioned Billy Joy, he works second shift, so he was paid overtime to go to the school. Officer Jakes, who's my school resource officer, happens to work first shift when the school's open, so he would have to come off a shift. And go over to the school, to work in the school for four hours or eight hours a week. I requested two four hour shifts. Per week, I think that that officer needs to be at at least eight hours per week. If we just ask, if we just go down to one four hour shift a week, at least we have someone in the school to start, but I, I would request to start with eight hours per week.
Well, what is this that Wilberham bills us?
So Wilberham has a school resource officer in the school, in Minutaw, where our students go over to that school. And he's basically a school resource officer in the town of Wilberham, which is Wilberham's jurisdiction, and has our kids over there, so we pay. Money towards his position, I believe, if that's, yep?
No.
Okay, so basically, he's a Wilberham police officer, he's hired by the district, if you will.
Yeah, then they bill us later on.
They bill us twenty percent of.
And so we don't have a resource officer agreementals now, this, is this where this officer is going to go?
This is, this officer go to agreementals school, correct? We haven't had a school resource officer agreementals for, for a long time. And that was one of my goals, to look forward to having a school resource officer back into the schools, I think it's very important.
Better call that was part of your interview.
That was part of my interview, correct?
What, um, so how many officers are on shift in the morning?
In the morning, we have our detective, and then two shift officers. That's Monday through Friday, the detective is there.
And, not knowing, how busy is the detective, that he couldn't like.
Well, he hit, oh, I'm sorry.
Do school resource a couple times a week.
That, that's a plug, we could, he does have court, which is an unknown variable that comes into play, whether it be for civil citation hearings, or just going over, bringing over paperwork. He does have, have transportation evidence, he's a, he's a utility officer, so there are. A lot of different things that he does do during the day. Could, could I free him up?
Right.
It takes away from the duties that he could be out there setting up some pepper surveillance or something like that for four hours, if I got four hours, we could, we could try to make that work. Uh, I, like I says, I was hoping to at least get a four hour, minimum of four hour block to be able to leave that shift alone and bring someone over to the school.
Okay, what, what does the resource officer do over it?
He's basically a resource for that school, for the kids there, it's, it's nice to have a rapport with the, with the kids, they see. The officer rather than coming to the house in a bad situation, they see the officer in a good situation, he'll dress down sometimes, he'll, he'll be in uniform, they'll work hand in hand with the uh. Teachers within, within the school classrooms, uh, there's even programs that they can institute if they're in there long enough during the day, uh, that they can help out with the help, uh, teacher. To um have, have their own basically block of, of teaching, um, to talk about whatever. May be, the drugs, it fills in for the dare officer too, basically, so.
Well, why do you think the legislature changed, it used to be mandatory? You know, and then they changed it to the superintendent have the discretion of.
Just, sure, there's, 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 there's both ends, there's, there's concerns on, on either end, um, sometimes, not, I mean, I'm not really a hundred percent sure why, what we're looking at, but. I think it's definitely, I've been one, I've seen it works, I see the rapport that we get in a small town like we have here, in a town like Hampton, I think is very important. Have that connection with the police.
What?
Yes, sir.
Uh, does the officer provide training to teachers and administrators?
Yes.
Regarding.
So.
Worst case.
Yes.
Situation.
Yes, so we do coordinate efforts with the school resource officer in Wilberham, and that's another. End of the tier that we could continue teaching into our, into our agreements with our officer from our town here, but yes, there is training that if we can give it to the, to the teachers and the administration in school, for the worst case scenario.
I think having the officer there also creates that uh. Sense of trust and somebody not to be afraid of.
Sometimes it's somebody more to go to.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and it has proven that way, but I do understand what Don is, Don is saying, the new police reform has created the superintendents. That have a good, actually selection process, I think, more than anything right now is what it is, is they're really looking at who should be in that school, because some departments, I think. Unfortunately have put just anybody in that school, that's probably not, not the right fit.
Alright, I saw the salary thing. Okay. Although the. Although the uh. Budget adjustment, the article, the article, the, the, the motion actually was. To. Reduce salaries from one million two seventeen to seventy four to one million forty three seven thirty three.
Right.
So. One point forty three seven thirty three.
So that was the input of the motion?
That was the move there, that was the original thing, but then motion, the, the. That must have been the uh. Retroactive. Alright, so the one million, well, sorry, everything bad I said about you, I take back. Almost.
Here, I can get some chocolates if you want.
Alright, and the career incentive was based on the uh, alright, so that's been just straight enough. Now explain to me about overtime. Okay, because you, because you changed it from thirty two hours overtime to forty.
So contractual wise. The most recent contract that was just agreed upon by the town has um. Offered. Four shifts a week to the full time force.
How many hours did they work a shift?
Eight hours. So, right now.
Thirty two hours.
Thirty two hours goes to the full timers.
Right.
In one week's period of time, Thursday, Friday to Thursday. After thirty two hours is filled by the full timers, now can come to a part time officer to take that shift. If there's another opening that happens to come up, whether it's all day, personal day, sick time, or. If that part timer, if we can't get a part timer, secure a part timer because he's other obligations or whatever, he can come back to a full time officer before it gets denied, before that shift gets denied. So right now, we currently have thirty two, come fiscal year twenty three, we've given them forty hours, now they have, I mean, uh, five shifts, they've got. Five shifts now, forty hours. So first rate refusal goes to the full time officers, five shifts. After that, you can fall back to a part time officer. So that overtime, in the previous years, the previous contracts, there'd been a cap. And the cap was set at thirty two, after thirty two was meant to go down to twenty four hours, or two, or three shifts, three eight hour shifts. And there was also a money, monetary value that was given by the board of select by the town to follow, and they would take out of that particular kitty. That now has been wiped out, there's no more kitty, there's no more. Basically cap on the forty hours, so come fiscal year twenty twenty three, we come into that they work forty hours first rate refusal. And then it can go to a part time officer after that, and then come back to them. And that was a contractual obligation that.
But it comes back to them based on seniority, right?
Based on seniority and a rotation process, so when you take overtime, you go to the bottom of the line, and so that overtime is the first.
Why is, why is. Why is forty hour overtime?
That's what the town has given them. As a contractual obligation.
No more than, but this is also worst case, right?
Yes.
Correct.
I understand, I understand, isn't a work week forty hours or thirty seven and a half?
So, so we're getting confused, I think, so this is, this is, so the officers work four days on, two days off.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's their work week. There's time off that the officers get, personal time, holiday vacation, comp day, so Don puts in for a comp day. I've already worked my forty hours, I have a right to overtime. I want to work Don's overtime shift, Don's shift that he took off for vacation, this officer has worked forty hours, has a right to that. Depending where I am on that list, I could be first, I could be second on the rotation, if I'm first, I have a choice to work that shift. And so the officer make.
And because it's more than forty hours in his work week, he's paid it at overtime.
He's paid it, and so what we did, so that contractual forty, that fifty nine nine five is an average. Highest pay officer to the lowest pay officer, we're not always sure who's going to take it, he could take, he can't take it all the time, and he can't take it all the time. So we did an average of the highest and the lowest.
And some, some weeks, you might get twenty four hours taken by your shift guys, and the rest by reserve.
Correct.
Or maybe even none of the time guys.
Correct, correct.
So, no one says, perhaps, it's a guessing game, in this current fiscal year, how have you seen that trend?
The trend's been far worse than we're talking about, there's been a lot of forty hours.
Full, it's not currently forty.
Well, it isn't, but it goes to forty if, if you don't have a reserve taking it, it can go to forty, it can go to forty eight. Once I post that shift. If, if forty hours, if thirty two hours have been met right now what it's at, and I post that shift. Now it's open for somebody to take it, if I choose not to post it. And just keep it that, hey, you just had your thirty two hours of overtime, we're done. Which has happened, because we've gotten over that weekly budget, which we don't want to get over there.
Right.
But now coming fiscal year twenty twenty three, we're going up to that forty, and then there's no backfill or fallout of you.
Have there been times when you've had a shift where you just don't fill? Do you ever make that call, like, okay, you know? Or just.
I have not had that particular shift, um, we're always trying to keep two officers on the road at all times, um, that officer wants a day off, uh, I haven't had that uh. Yet, I have talked to the officers and said, basically, if you can get it filled by a reserve officer, we're going to fill it, we've had that rapport in there. Um, it's getting harder and harder to go to that point there, because we've also been faced with some orderings at some, some point there too, someone to call out sick, so I could have forty hours, I'm up to the cap of thirty two hours ago, now I get someone calls out sick. I have to fill that sick call out, because I don't want one option, I don't think it's safe that one option working.
Then you gotta mandate somebody. Then you gotta mandate somebody.
Then we gotta have someone coming.
So, just out of curiosity, say, Officer A worked thirty two hours, he's top on the food chain for overtime. Somebody calls him sick, does it skip over him because he hasn't hit forty hours?
So, see, you're getting confused, we're, 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 and maybe I'm confusing by putting the, the hours in there with the, right? They all work their forty hours a week, all the officers work forty hours.
Right.
And that has no bearing on where that officer is in the overtime, this is the overtime rotation.
Right, but say.
So if he only worked thirty two hours in that week, he's still in his work week.
So he's, does, he's not eligible for overtime?
No, he's still eligible for overtime.
Well, he's eligible for the shift, he just wouldn't get overtime today, right?
Oh, no, no, he gets overtime, yes.
Why? He hasn't hit forty hours.
Because that's weird under the setting, that's first rate refusal, it has to fit that cap.
Where am I going wrong in this conversation?
We had this, because they're going to work their, you're going wrong, because they're going to work their forty hours anyway.
They're always, they're always getting paid the contractual man, that is part of the way the contract works, so they get forty hours a week.
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed, then above and beyond is five shifts that they get.
But they're not guaranteed five shifts.
No, yes, there's, they're guaranteed five shifts per, per the contract.
No, they're guaranteed.
If they're out there.
If they're.
Well, if they're all, okay, well, like, wait, we say, right, right, if they're out there, if, if there was time available.
There is technically no guaranteed overtime, in a perfect world, nobody calls in sick, nobody takes time off.
Correct, they're, okay, correct, correct, I, I see.
So I, I think, I mean, we had this conversation earlier, I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
Right, it's, it's not.
From a corporate world to the civil. That, I was confused, is that overtime's not guaranteed, it's not. Old line it.
It's only there if you put, if someone puts it for time off, correct, so it's what you're saying?
That's right.
If an officer could qualify, pick up a shift, and he gets his forty hours, does he have to work the forty hours to qualify? So he could take five, six shifts and then put in for an overtime shift? He could call on sick for five shifts, his forty hours, and then say, oh, I'm first in the rotation, I'm going to take that.
Well, after three days, you gotta give me, you've gotta give me a reason, but yeah, you technically sure, yeah.
What's the fifteen thousand five hundred contractual?
That actually has to come out here, that was what was given uh previous contracts for the cap that was there, we had a cap that was in place, and there was a certain amount of money. That's, that's coming out there, right, that's. Yes, that, that has to come. Fifteen five.
We're getting there.
I think that the real question we need to start asking now is about, you have the extra, the new, the new officer.
Sure.
As opposed to the reserve officers. So there's a good chunk of change between one and half of the other, I think that's going to be the topic of conversation in the next three years.
So I do, I do see, um, we gotta start rather sooner than later, and obviously, um, with the police reform, uh, we're held to a certain standard with our part time officers, they're going to be. Brought up the train to a full time level, um, it depends on who, who does it, as I said before, there's well over three thousand. By the end of three years, you'll probably be down to about a thousand to fifteen hundred part time officers.
In the state, right?
In the state. I'm asking for a full time officer now. Is I think it's going to help, there is language in our contract that shows six P M to two A M, and for the purpose of second shift being a little bit busier, I think that full time officer for um. Arrests that come in, for transports, where I have to call somebody else in, I got an officer there already, for bad weather, I have an officer already there, I don't have to page out and look to get an officer in on overtime. So I've got some savings going on there, um, dipping into my third shift, which I'm starting to begin to experience some problems in filling those third shift callouts, or just third shift time off. A lot of officers, reserve officers, don't want to work a third shift, there's no incentive to work a third shift, um, so, um, I think I could maybe end up. Filling only half of that shift, or only looking to fill half the shift, so I do see some cost savings, now. As I move into this next tier, I'm going to, fiscal year twenty twenty three, I'm going to have eight reserve officers. Two of those officers are going to be bridged. From fiscal year twenty four, I'm going to drop down to maybe one or two guys that might bridge, possibly might, by the end of my three years, I'll have maybe four. Officers that bridge, they're currently part time and are certified as a full time police officer, and I can keep them as part time. And as we move forward, I might be able to hire one or two more out there, ultimately, the goal in the state of Massachusetts with police reform is gearing towards an all law enforcement officer, full time departments, really. A lot of these guys can't go out and get all this training and continue to work on a full time basis as they work full time elsewhere, than they work part time. So where we're looking probably to go is if I have maybe four or five part time officers still working. You're looking to at least add maybe another one beyond to nitrate last, full time officer, um, and now we have that detective on during the day, second and third shift change things around, you could always go to a minimum manning. Where one, someone calls out sick, I don't necessarily have to fill it anymore, because I already have two on. So this, this full time officer that I'm requesting in, in this fiscal year twenty twenty three, I think has definitely benefit as we move forward.
And what happens if you don't get it?
If I don't get it, I continue to use the reserves as, as I've been and try to, um, knowing farewell that I'm going to.
Where along the line this is going to break.
I know I've got probably eight, and maybe can hire one or two more that's going to be out there at wings, but then I'm dropping right down to like three.
What's? For conversations sake, what's the. The deadline that we would need to make a commitment by, whether we're going to continue on with the reserve force or go into a full time?
Well, we are in a full time force already.
That's not, that's not adding the additional.
So, so to continue adding, you're going to come to a point in time where our full timers are currently here now, requesting a day off, and they're not getting the day filled. Or you're going backwards and trying to work a guy alone to give that guy a day off, because they all have earned vacation, comp, sick, and all that, so we're coming. Sooner or later, within the next two years, we've got to make some decisions of how many more full time officers are going to be out of the police department, and what we can do with these officers.
Just a, the segue out of that into some expenses and training, is that where the additional training expense comes from, is because you have to train these reserve officers, is that why it's doubled?
So what I looked at is, our full time officers get trained, and our part time officers get trained, and there's a minimum of forty, um, there's a minimum of firearm CPR training of like forty hours, they all need to be trained. As we move forward, um, there's more training that's being expected of us in the mental illness world, health and wellness, and I feel as though if my full timers are being trained, my part time officer should be being trained, it should be transparent across the board. We haven't had as much as that in the past, so, um, in order to keep moving forward, as the state mandates are requiring of the police reform, that officer is an all law enforcement officer, and they're all trained the same. So that's where I'm boosting up my training budget to keep them the same, so if I'm going to send you the mental illness training, I'm going to be sending my part time officers there too, as I still have them.
Robert. Can, can ARPA funds pay for like RAD or for uh, you know, you know, mental illness training and stuff, I mean, that's something that could be.
The final, the final rule from the treasury says, each community has. A ten million dollar standard allowance. If you only have one point five million, which is what we have, all of that money is a standard allowance, and you can use it for any government services. We've already used it for the water line. We have the opportunity to use it for any other government services that we think.
Because I know other police departments have used the money for.
Sure, yeah, we can do it.
Does it extend over the fiscal year, I mean, can we make a multi year commitment on it?
Yes, we can, uh, we're supposed to spend ARPA, I think, by two thousand twenty four, so we've got plenty of time.
Alright, what else you got?
Um. What about you, what you got to say?
The file went up on the server around four thirty, so.
Um, lawn maintenance, was that always part of the budget? Because I didn't see it in last year's.
So maintenance is part of the, part of the budget, yes, and so, the lawn maintenance, so what, what I was looking at is, uh, as the building's six years old, things are starting to break. So as I took over as chief, I had a few, few of the sprinkler heads break.
Yeah.
We had to fix the sprinkler system, um, so I've increased a little bit there due to fertilizing going on, replacing sprinkler heads, uh, I'm having a brown out section in the front lawn. Um, that is due to smaller amounts of lome in that area.
Pay it.
Pay, pay right around the building, there's a track for fitness, perfect, right around the dial.
I agree with you, I agree with you on that.
So, um, we've had, I, I put more in, in that for problems that I'm starting to run into in, in a little older of a building, but uh, fertilizer's in there.
I saw you have the septic pump also.
We did have that pumped, I'm expected to get a uh, a pump, a new pump, well pump, they suggested, because we have iron in the water in that area, uh, that's for the sprinkler system, but the uh, septic had to be pumped, yes, and I think that's usually.
Isn't it almost an annual expense?
Four or five years, four years.
Four years.
Every, every other year.
Well, I think of the, the amount of people they have, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, for the size, I mean, we have a bigger. So that's what, that's, that's why I, I asked to increase that better.
Got a new cruiser, what about the other two?
They are uh in, they are going to be outfitted within the next couple of weeks.
Did you win the Ford?
Uh we went with Fords, we went with Fords, I think I put that out to Bob, I think I said I got two Fords coming. Uh and uh they'll be outfitted within the next few weeks, and we are gonna trade in the other two. Um and then um looking for coming into fiscal fiscal year twenty twenty-three with a with a new one. Um we can look back towards Chevy, uh the end of February, they're supposed to have, if they're going to be able to get Chevys. If not, I've already been told by this uh vendor, uh this uh dealership that we could be able to get another Ford.
I'd like to see the maintenance on the Ford versus the Chevy, because I was looking at the new Chevys that you got here.
Right.
And the prices on some of the brakes and repairs are more expensive, so I'd like to see what a new Ford is gonna cost for maintenance and repairs too.
Yeah, hopefully we won't have much because it's a new Ford.
Right, but I mean, you got a twenty twenty-one Tahoe that needs.
Needs brakes and a bigger vehicle, bigger wheel, absolutely.
We have a capital planning meeting, Tom, like if we can get an updated list of the vehicles and the two you plan on replacing.
I think I sent that to what's that?
Dad, you have that?
Last week, did he uh? I sent that request, he gave me a, he asked me for a request, I think I gave it to him last week, is what he.
Called out the two that are going here.
Okay, okay. Did he say thumbs up or we don't?
Um Chief and I discussed whole issue of cycling some of the older cars down. Uh talked with the building commissioner, and he said, no. So we're down to the question of cycling one of the two older cars down when the new cars arrive. Chief suggested that if the, another new car is on the warrant for May, that they would cycle down a car with less mileage than the two that he currently is gonna be getting rid of, which have over, well over a hundred thousand miles, so that the the dog officer, the A C O will have something a little better than she currently has.
I know, that's what I said last meeting.
But.
I know, that's what I suggested last.
Yes, right, correct. And I had a conversation with the chief about it, so.
What?
That comment.
Yes. He says he has the car in bulk.
He does, okay, thank you.
The eight thousand seven hundred printer monitor, is that a yearly expense?
Yeah, cartridge must be bad, right? So that that's mon- that's the monitor, that's actually the computer itself. Um and with all the ones that we have in the station between booking, it seems that something's always going there.
Yeah.
And so Mike Neeny and Sergeant Segovar, I T officers, come to me and say, hey, this needs to be replaced, and we go ahead and replace it, that's the yearly where it's been. That's what it's been in the past, and that's where we continue to maintain.
I don't understand.
Don't understand?
I mean, I don't know, I gotta.
Well, with police, with with police um based equipment, well.
It's almost, but I mean, you take a bite every year, it's not the same, you know, a third, a third, a third, it's the cycle.
What kind of monitors are there?
Uh I guess with their three C D W, uh do you know what that monitor we have? Not a hundred percent sure, but they work, well, they do get needed to replace too, but it's not something you can keep, just they just go out. Good, good question. We we have only two other printers, the one at the fire office and Kathy's office, the black and whites.
I did ask about, Tony, about the console, he said, you know, the the idea is to keep the redundancy there, as you.
That's where I M C looks at it.
I'd have to call in my I T guy, I don't know if he's on here.
What what are the monitors on? Are they, what are they monitoring?
No, 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 these are the computer monitor.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I got a computer that's fifteen years old, I get the same monitor, I monitor every day. I like to know what they're doing with it.
Work.
And they're like a hundred and ninety-nine dollars a piece. So eighty-seven hundred is two hundred bucks a piece, that's four hundred monitors.
Go on Alpha Pass and try, I'll keep a better eye on it.
Oh, I think the thing is just make sure you're not replacing it just for replacing safe.
Yeah, no, and and I I.
My legs, I keep two monitors in the closet, if it fails, I've got one, if they don't, I had a good year.
What is P M A? P M A?
That's our policy management that we pay for. So that keeps our policies um in 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 a computer system that we go into.
And it acts on the cruiser generator.
So that policy management, um we might be able to cut the cost on that. Uh this year, I bet Sergeant's uh still looking into that. Um and we might be able to use another software that we currently have through our planet system, which are scheduling systems, to help us with that, he's researching it. So we might be able to have a savings there.
Can you just call him like I do with my Adobe and be like, hey, I gotta cancel and let you redo straight?
Exactly, I can try that.
I do it every year, it works.
Whatever it takes.
Go daddy's good for that.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
So it sounds like he's got, you've got a couple changes you wanna make to this and bring it back, or something like that, fifteen thousand, things like that.
One thing I I I do question though is ammo didn't go up in the budget. Do you foresee that being a problem in the future?
Sure, everything's going up. It's hard to get right now, it hasn't gone up much, but it's hard to get.
When you can get it, it's usually inflated.
So we haven't had much of an issue with that. Um I know one thing we had talked about was the tasers. John, um we had talked about um the ARPA, and I put it in the budget. Um and that plan that we put in there for that yearly rate is is all new tasers, holsters, warranties, batteries, um the most updated taser. Now, there's nothing wrong with our current tasers, but obviously they're a little bit older and there's newer to to be had. Um so that there uh that we put in the budget, wasn't sure if it's gonna be covered by ARPA, it's covered by ARPA, we'll take it out of the budget.
But here's the thing, and I think we talked, do we wanna take the planet the apple the entire time? Is there a rushing need to get new tasers this year?
Right, so, no.
Okay, so maybe that's like the type of thing, oh, great, two cruisers, let's get one next year type thing. You gotta balance what you're going for that.
There is a need to replace a couple of the ones we have, which I said before, we'd actually brought this, I said, so there was like three.
Almost like your computer thing, look, it's an annual thing, we got.
How many tasers do you have?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Chief, we have an ongoing discussion about ARPA funds, so if you could put together a list of what you would like to see ARPA funds spent on, I can bring it to the selectmen and it won't be too long before we start making some serious choices.
Okay.
I guess I'll ask the question to them, not that familiar with it. Does every officer need their own taser like a firearm, or you would just have a stock of six of them and you check one out when you go on here?
So the full-time officers all have, have one.
Their their own.
Their own one that they carry on and just like their firearm. Uh there is a docking station of extras that are there for their part-time officer comes in and works a shift with a full-time officer, but then all the full-time officers have been assigned a taser.
Is that necessary? Is, I'll ask the question, is it necessary? I understand firearms, that makes sense.
Right, right. I think it's along the lines of of your duty, so I'd say yes, it is.
Let's say there might be some variations between one, right, if if they're bought at separate timeframes, don't they sometimes vary?
No, it shouldn't be, no, if it's an X two or an X twenty-six, the X two is going to be just a newer model and the display is going to be working or not working. I think we have one where the battery display, you don't see, and it's charged up fully.
They're reusable, right? So if you discharge one, you you trigger out the the band and put a new one on.
You've gotta get new um terms, prompts, yes, you've gotta get the, which those which we have to purchase too. There's practice ones, so the new, the new plan would cover the whole set of practice ones that we practiced with when we enter, you'd be certified a lot too. But, yeah.
In the administrative assistant and the
Clerks.
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 What was the percentage increase?
So they, we were, I got that from the treasurer, and they were given administrative assistant was a was a step twelve grade four, do you need the actual amount, or do you?
And that's an increase for me.
So that was the step up, that went up a step, and then the clerks uh went up a step and they're agreed to. Uh they both were, that was something agreed upon when they first became our clerks, to keep their um soundings the same.
And then they got a call and that.
No, no. I didn't think we did stepping through, we just did the whole.
Just the first year. So no step, just call, right?
That's what I thought we did for.
And then it was a year that you asked.
Just call. This came from the treasurer, and we had, this is what they are, step twelve, grade four, and it gave the uh pay.
Dick did say, depending on where.
Depending where they fell.
He was, that it was either a step increase, I thought, or a taller. Because he had set that schedule.
Right.
What's step one?
So my administrative assistant is step twelve, grade four. My two clerks, one's a step twelve, one's a step eight, they're both grade twos. And then my custodian, step four, grade two.
So you actually have a custodian now that that was.
No, we have, we have a custodian, that's how he works Monday through Friday.
He bowl the lawn?
Ten to two. Kenny, um he does snow blow. Can you get him a model lawn, maybe? Water the lawn? He let it through.
Step four, two.
Excuse me, step four, grade two.
All right, anything else?
I just had like clarity on that, I really thought we were doing four, five across the board, or it was called no step there, nobody took a step. Only ones here.
If if Dick provided that, I'm pretty sure he had figured out for every employee where we were, what we had last year and what we should get this age. That's my understanding, but.
Town building capital two accessory deposit?
Yes, um selectmen have said that we should continue to upgrade our H R operations. This is part of three documents that are now available. One uh is a board and commission and committee handbook.
Well, no, we're we're in town buildings capital.
Yeah, okay, I'm just saying the second one, the second one is a a listing of all boards and committee members, and the third is um yeah, I'm talking, I'm really talking on the world item, aren't I? Uh town buildings and capital improvements, you should have a letter in your packet that just came in from the E L architect. Nothing has changed since last week in terms of the revision that they provided, but that letter is worth reading.
I think Kevin may have had some misunderstanding there, like, you know, Kevin's been a good friend of the town. You know, worked for Charlie Schmidt, you remember Charlie, Don as well, is. Maybe an opportunity to chat with him.
Yeah, I did chat with him after the first review, said um we're concerned about the price overall, and secondly, uh the estimate that you provided did not give us uh information, you were not going to review the mechanicals in the building. So I said, come back with another proposal that reviews the mechanicals as well as the other. And then he came back with that second proposal, and this just arrived today, so.
So the second proposal still says nothing about mechanicals, that's the one that we got.
Had one last week, if you say that.
One twenty-eight, January twenty-eighth, right?
It there, there is a there are two parts to it, one is uh is building utilities.
Yeah, it was kind of the same. Building utilities, heating, plumbing, electrical surveys are not included at this time.
Okay, that's the old one.
That's the one I was on the one drive for tonight. January twenty eighth, twenty twenty.
What I crafted for tonight was the letter that you got.
Justice.
I don't recall.
No, I don't either, uh there's a chronology there of.
So maybe we should just look for and inform them if they're gonna give us a timeline of he said, she says.
No, I think uh I think a little heads up, you know, Kevin is, Mark Japp, I think it'd be a war for him to have to come to our meeting. I think we've had better lockdown sometimes with the, rather than the uh electronic communication, just bring him in here.
That's what I'll do. I'll set that up.
Okay.
Who did the original study? Was it E L architecture or was it Marius? Maroy, Maroy?
With them, but they had consulting from them, so there's something there.
How come we're not going back to Maroy to do the proposal, if they did the original?
Didn't Maroy subcontract with E L architecture?
Five years ago?
Yeah.
Why would you do so?
All right, so we're gonna put him on for the twenty-second or something.
Yes, yeah.
Updated water agreements?
Uh you should have a copy, which I just finished today. It required a lot more extensive revision than I expected, but I've sent that to town council. Uh it it accomplishes the two things that the board wanted. Number one, um that this agreement to provide water without charge applies to the current owners and to relatives, immediate relatives. And then number two, the town agrees to do testing once a year. The old agreement had uh testing quarterly.
Up to a certain point, but.
But I thought what the what the board said last week was is they wanted it annually.
Well.
Because they're doing it annually, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I think it should be in line with their agreement. So do you have the other three or just this one?
That's just a sample for you to look at if you have any problems with it. Uh I'll ask you to sign, I'll ask you to sign copies for everybody next week. We'll have the opinion back from town council.
That's what I'm saying, you're making these all basically the template if you will.
Correct.
John, have you seen this?
No.
No.
And that's also gonna say that if they sell the house, the new person.
Yes.
If it's not a relative.
The new person will will be charged, I put in the, I put in that statement there, will be charged at the same rate as other customers of the scanning. I just finished that this afternoon, it took longer than I expected, so I haven't gotten it out to anybody else other than the selectmen tonight.
All right, so we'll get that next week. Stormwater permits, stormwater permits, right? So this is uh the the two self-stashed uh applicants filed their stormwater permit application. Uh is the is the building inspector or the building commissioner has ninety days to make a decision, we're coming up to the deadline on that. Uh tie-in bond has been reviewed, and they've listed a few things that they think we should include as conditions in any permit, any permit approval. So part of the thing is that it says, part of it, it says that the board, which is, which is us, I guess, so the approval of stormwater permanent application, subject to any conditions, modification, restrictions required by the board as a favor. So I think the tie-in bond letter says they think it's okay, but we should have these certain conditions put into it.
I tried to go through it and star or check on, just the, just the stuff that I would have to look at before permitting. But in no way was it like making a determination whether they're approved or not, but from what I read, it looks like an approval with conditions. And again, it's up to you guys, I think. It looks like an approval with conditions, and again, it's up to you guys, I think, to approve or disapprove, I can only. Say what the peer review, that you guys read says.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want to, I just don't want to be constructively approved.
It can be extended, but if it's only if it's mutually agreed upon.
Right.
So.
So the deadline for one of them was the twenty-ninth, I think, or the, well. Twenty-seventh, because thirty-one days. December, January.
The applications were filed. So ninety days from there, so yeah, we're coming out in the beginning of next month.
Yeah, well, well, in the next, next week.
Exactly.
In the next week for one of them.
That's the million dollar question is, in this process now, what's the next step?
Have you been contacted by both applicants, wondering about the stat, status?
No, because that's, that's also one of the things where I think it's they're communicating with the board that they're submitting. The paperwork through, in this case, it's the planning board, so I think they communicate with the planning board. And we kind of get dropped to the side because they're just trying to satisfy the application. And the, and the, you know, the permit fee portion of it, and then work through the process.
Right, do you know if they've contacted planning then about the stormwater applications?
I think. Well, well, I can only say.
Stormwater permit application, made very clear by town council, that the planning board has nothing to do with the stormwater. There's a totally separate process.
What happens is the peer review gets turned over back to them for some reason, and that's part of the process that we're still ironing out. So we have. We know they're supposed to both, both work in their own ways.
Right, so we have the peer review thing here, and one of the things that says is that the. The town should, uh, the requirements for the project seek a special permit, the chem, complete list of chemicals, pesticides, fuels. Et cetera, should be used in storage, uh, the township confirms this information provided by the.
Right.
They probably haven't because they don't know.
I think it's in, in larger than household quantities.
Yeah.
And they don't know. Well, I don't see how you can when you don't know.
So is that a reason to deny the permit because they don't know, they can't comply with it? Okay, so then there's a number of administrative things which say we should include it as conditions. Of the approval of the stormwater permit. The other thing I'm a little bit concerned about is a tie-in bond review is, it doesn't really address climate change. And if you look at the state. Climate change study, Connecticut, that base, basin which we're concerned to be in. They expect to have a. Uh, at least two, it's forty-six point, sorry, I think it says forty-six point three-five days. Of rainfall more than one inch, they expect it to go up to fifty days by twenty-third. And then we don't have, currently have any rainfall of greater than four inches, but they expect to have at least one or two days by twenty-third. So I don't know how that, that's a lot of.
Climate change is a ballast hat, right on.
So I don't know if they figured that in.
They're doing that hundred-year storm, but they're not talking about the storms we're gonna have in the next hundred years.
But you know what the hundred-year storm means? It means that the storm, you could have five of those hundred-year storms in one year, never have one again.
We got that one that flooded the scan, and then I think we had one ten years later. In case you forgot, here it is again.
So.
So what's your proposal, just uh?
I guess my proposal was to have to, to. I mean, we got, we could look at it again next week, but my proposal is to, to, to go by what tie-in bond said. With the conditions, and the conditions is to provide this list of chemicals and pesticides and all the others.
I think we, we what, we designated one of our, we designated agent for this.
Right.
So maybe he's the one that would write the letter, follows up with this.
Right, and it'll fall after the date we did that, so we've been better, he has been.
Yeah.
The agent.
In the, right, and, and prior, and the bylaws says that the board and the agent, the, depending on what the board says, the agent. You know, can add the conditions.
Right, there's approval, there's approval with conditions. I'm your agent.
So I think we, so we can get together a letter with approval with these conditions that tie-in bonds that, they're both were the same.
Right, basically.
Yeah.
You know, they both have little nuances.
Are you comfortable doing that?
I don't have an issue with it, I'd rather have an itemized list of things that we need to have, if this does go further. There's gotta be things that I need to collect before permitting.
Right.
Or else they don't.
They don't.
And that would be one of the things, would be that list of hazardous, possible hazardous materials. That somebody could be in there, but again, I think that's one of those issues where I don't know. How they would actually know.
Well, they know, I asked them, it doesn't, there's no way to tell. But I think we should put that in as a condition.
It's a condition and we're tie-in bond habits, so I don't have any problem at all transcribing that.
Is there a motion to this, or you're comfortable like? We are directing you to. Follow the protocol with the stormwater procedure.
Well, that was one of the questions I think that was asked earlier on, was how does this board operate as. Having a stormwater, the chair, so I was thinking, you know, it's almost like a septic design. Where you have your health agent and a plan is submitted, and she could easily like rubber stamp it. Or he could easily rubber stamp it and go, yes, this is a, but it has to go before you guys to kind of get your blessing. And so it's almost like, to me, it's almost like the same.
So are you saying you would prepare a letter saying, I'm gonna approve this with all these conditions and bring it back to us?
Well, you would review it.
Yeah.
And then I would sign it as your designated agent, I don't have a problem with that, that way, at least all the verbiage or whatever you want in there.
Okay.
Or whatever the town needs to have in there is in there and covered.
Right.
I don't wanna miss something on an order of conditions that tie-in bond is generating, I don't think we will.
So you want it, so can you do that by next Tuesday?
Absolutely.
Alright, good. Alright, thanks. Arpa?
Arpa, as I mentioned earlier. The treasury final rule, unlike the interim rule that came out last November, the final rule that came out. Uh, just at the end of last month, uh, allows a s- so-called standard allowance. Above the ten million. So we have one point five, and they allow that to be available for any and all government services. Except, you can't put it into the pension fund, can't put it into retirement, and they're very reluctant. Uh, to allow for capital improvements. Prior to that, the interim rule from the treasury said you have to use ARPA money for water, sewer, broadband. And premium pay for first responders, now it's much more relaxed or looser. And so what the town has to do is to make a decision on how to spend the remaining funds that we have. After the water project, roughly half a million, and so we have.
No, remaining roughly a million.
Remain, no, no, we, we spent a half a million on water, so we have roughly a million, yeah. And so possibilities would include still premium pay. Uh, broadband, although I would not recommend any decision on broadband until we get information on the. Infrastructure legislation, which had plenty of money for broadband.
Yeah, with the state story about that too.
Right, correct. Tasers, if that's something that you wanted to do, designed for a tip project, highway projects. Uh, sidewalks at Allen and Sumner, uh, and culverts and pavement, so those are the. Like, the ones that we've discussed, there may be more. I, we're gonna get a list, I guess, from the police chief as to what items he'd like to use ARPA funds for. But we're, we're coming towards, I think, a decision, and a list of what we think the most, that you think the most highest priority.
You had mentioned once in the past, this is a little outside of Scovars, but um, the casino mitigation points that we could. Yes. Submit for more of that.
Yes.
Different plans.
We can.
And have we done that?
No.
We talked about.
No, um, what was said to me, that it would have to be for projects along that corridor. Uh, the only other project that I could think of is the three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Build the sidewalk that has been designed by tie-in bond. Uh, you could also use, uh, apply for money to do a design for a, you know, tip project, but I don't sense any. I mean, I think, uh, I've, I've heard the concerns there about possibility of recommendation for a roundabout, which. One member at least of this board is opposed to, so I, I don't hear any, I'm not hearing any demand to go to apply. Uh, for design funds for a tip project, so we're back to, I think, sidewalk or anything else that you can, you can come up with. Um, I do have, well, yes.
Well, the tip project, you know, they talked about, they came to our meeting and said, well, gosh, it'll take four years, we hadn't even picked out the car yet. He knew how much it would cost and how long it would take.
Yes.
You know, and.
And the color.
And the color, right, you know, this is your solution, both, and it was, I have to tell you, I hear more people, when you talk about sidewalks. They like to see Main Street finished more than Allen Street.
You're right.
You know, and the biggest problem with finishing Main Street is just that slope between.
Yes.
I guess the V and Billy's house.
Yeah.
You know, we could find a way to, I told, Main Street is an easier fit or finish, if you will, for that south sidewalk, and I think a lot more people.
I guess that begs the question, if, if, I was saying, you know, there's money in that fund, should we have it?
And that's corridor work at the same time.
Right, exactly, well, yeah, I mean, the, the fund can be used for the corridor.
Yeah.
If we're gonna upgrade the sidewalk, we can use ARPA funds, uh, and I think clearly.
I'd, well, I'd like to go back, and we never asked for a design study for Main Street. To be honest, you're crossing fewer houses than you would with the, you don't have the street crossing, which was the whole problem with the Allen Street. Because you're already on that side of the road.
I'd like to see a design project for that.
Yeah.
And then if we have those, then we can go back for that.
Then you have a choice at the same point.
Yeah, get some design done for that.
Then we can submit two.
People are doing more walking, as I said to the board before, I see people walking on East Long Meadow Road every morning. It's dangerous, it is dangerous. Problem is, we don't have, we don't have the right of way there, I mean, we, we may own it, but if we, if we use the right of way. It would really change the front yards of a lot of people. But I, I think you're, you're seeing more walking for exercise purposes, and the pattern, I've seen it several times, is if you decide to do it. There'll be a group that say, no, don't do it, it's a waste of money, and you say, well, it's state money, and they'll say, well, I pay that tax too. And then you do it, if it gets done, then people use it, I mean, people really, so.
Well, if you're taking from the casino money, they're like, well, what are you?
To John's point, maybe we should use that money from what we allotted for casino funds to do that study on Main Street. And then, once we get that study, we have that other study for Allen Street, and just go back to the gaming commission, like, these are our proposals, what can you give us?
And, and speaking of the casino money, do we have any kind of hope or timeframe for the crossing?
Yes, I, I have, I have the design, all we have to do, all I have to do is say to. The person who has done the design. Put it up in the bit, and they will do it, and I think, i- in the discussion I've had at least, he said, I can get somebody to do it, so.
The equipment?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, the, honestly, the pattern on the road is the least of my concerns. But getting that equipment, and you talked before, it's important, how far down the road are you warning, stuff like that, that's terrible, they fly from Connecticut.
Well, I will uh explore design remains.
Yeah.
And uh.
I think that'd be a.
Yep, there we go.
Absolutely. Hey, Landport Interrogatory. Case. Hamlin Self-Storage.
Yes, you're signing what you have done.
While you're doing that, I can mention that we've also talked with uh, the various parties. Who have some uh, information or messages that the, they've asked for, that the attorney has asked for in this slap case. I've checked with the building commissioner, he doesn't have any, checked with conservation, they don't have any, but, uh, selectman's office. I have some, I know that you, you've got quite a bit, uh, so we are assembling. All the information and messages that they've asked for, it is taking some significant time. And I've asked everyone at town hall at least to track your time, because the law says that you have to provide this information. But those who ask for it are required to uh, pay for the time, that you use that time. So we have to use the lowest paid person who can do that work, but. Uh, no.
Uh, because she mentioned to me that, uh, since this is Eva's job. That there was no re- or no request for funds from the attorneys. For the information.
We don't, we don't know that. We don't know that, we don't know that Eva didn't go back and say, because if it's an R O A, you know, or.
It is.
You pay.
Yes.
You pay the time, and that's.
Um, I did talk with John, and they are assembling the information that they have. Make sure the time is tracked, and that it goes into the pot.
So, so let me understand, because what I understand, that the Hamlin Self-Storage LLC. Requested a Freedom of Information Request Product Act.
Correct.
And their theory is, from what I've read, is there was some nefarious dealings which got Ms. Mitty and Ms. Border appointed.
Yes.
Okay, and so therefore, they're asking for records from the selectmen, the planning board. And a hundred, almost nearly a hundred citizens.
Yes.
Who legitimately uh, stated opposition to the thing.
Yes.
And they want their records, and, and some attempt to prove some type of. One, I don't know.
Well, I've looked at uh, all the records in the last week or so, there's no case there, I don't think, we, we were marginally involved, first of all, with the whole.
Well, but, but, but even, even, but they're also asking for any kind of communication they have with the planning, so. Are, are we supposed to provide, if someone stood up in a meeting and said. Uh, I don't think this is a good idea, I mean, so I think you gotta provide the minutes of the meeting, I think you gotta provide the video recording, right? I think the people should be notified that they may be called at some point, all eighty-nine or ninety-one.
They've asked for electronic copies, which is the latest game, because.
They don't have to pay.
That's less expensive than printing and, and going through that, so, I was actually going to print. The emails that I have, and uh. I, I can't do, legally, I have to provide it in electronic form.
Well, I, I just, I, I, I just, I just, I mean, lawyer, they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but I just think it's a. Really a stretch to, to in some way, you think that, that the public, uh, the voters, residents of the town. Don't have a right to talk to their elected officials or speak at elected, or speak at a board meeting and voice their opinion, and that somehow. Influences the person, well, you know what, maybe it does, because that's what it's supposed to do, they're supposed to hear the people make a decision. So, that's all, my thought about that, that's all, here's this, I'll put it.
Thank you.
Non-administered contract.
There's a one-month contract there that was printed.
A one-month contract.
For the month of June.
This is to extend the town administrator for one month.
Well, we had discussed earlier how it was kind of unusual to end it June, in early June, rather than at the end of June, so. That's what you asked me to do, and that's what I.
Again, we have no idea why it was written that way in the first place.
I did not write it.
You're done, or I, we're kind of surprised.
I would have done it on June to June thirtieth, um, but that's it, there, there's no other change.
Well, it's got the, it's got the correct amount there, it's got the correction to the seventy-five.
I, yeah, um.
Not, not, not this one.
Not this one.
Yeah, 75.
Well, I would say cross that out, because if we're gonna do anything like that, it should be done in the new fiscal year.
Only because I think it would exceed the appropriated amount.
Correct, yeah, yeah. It would. I, I, I.
I think you probably took the new one and condensed it down to one month.
Seventy, right? Seven.
Yeah.
But free coffee. You have free coffee.
Free coffee. Free coffee.
Water.
Actually, I have free water. I bring my own coffee, have my own cell phone.
Whatever.
My own car. No mileage.
Can't even charge it.
Not even an electricity. Not even any electricity.
When was the last time you filled that thing up?
What?
When was the last time you filled that thing up?
My car? Never.
All right, motion.
Motion to extend town administrator contract one month to June 30th, 2022.
Second.
No favor? So we're gonna.
I got. You got people got.
The initial copy.
Okay. Congratulations. The next we have on the agenda is the one-day permit for the Senior Citizen Center Volunteer Recognition party April 21st.
Yeah, this is an annual event, basically, and really, it's critical this year because of all the work they've been doing during the COVID times, so. I would recommend working towards this, please.
In the way of the.
Yes.
Both in second, all in favor?
Aye, aye. For next meeting, some residents have expressed an interest in having a town-wide party. Apparently today, two people even came into Town Hall and said they had heard about a discussion about this.
Walk party?
I don't know if you called.
We weren't invited.
No, I don't think you were invited, but anyway, I just said to Jane, I'll put this on the agenda for next week.
Don, when you started, I was talking about, really, we need to start planning, hate to say it, for the 150.
What is it?
It's a 150, it's a 28, and you're like, oh my gosh. Thank you.
150?
150.
Sure.
I know it's a, it's a ways away, but honestly, this is when you start putting $10,000 away every year, and just and you get people involved. So we should be thinking about that.
And how about a town project for the 150? How about, how about a major project of some kind for the 150?
Sure, sidewalks everywhere.
I think, I think this was different, isn't this what Jane was talking about?
No, she was talking about a party to kind of celebrate that we're getting beyond COVID.
And she.
And having, having a town-wide activity in the warm weather.
No, I did, I think she mentioned that, and I did say, we did make a point that, boy, this Memorial Day is gonna be better than ever.
Yes.
But it's the wrong occasion for that type of thing, so I think her point is, yeah, do something in June, weather's good. You know?
Well, I'd scratch it on the agenda today, so you can talk next week.
I'll tell you a good, a good template for it, is the National Light Out. Because they do a nice event there, we get a great turnout, something like that.
Get a great turnout, for sure. Selectmen's reports.
I'll clear it. I'll clear it with a heck of a week.
Non-administered report.
Okay.
We have plans for our night, that's.
We do not need, we do not need to go into the executive session tonight, because as you recall, you would suggested that we have a performance evaluation of the highway superintendent. He has the form, but I don't have the self
Evaluation.
Evaluation yet back, so we don't need that, and I have yet to meet with the highway union to discuss some of the comments that you made about what they would like to put on the table.
Is also that letter that we got, that was their union?
Yes.
Okay.
That was it, yeah. Right, so that's where we are, I'm still waiting to hear back from Mark. And just if I can skip down to the three documents that I prematurely talked about. What the, the handbook is, I think, finished. As part of it, there'll be three documents. The handbook itself, a performance evaluation form, which starts with self-evaluation, followed by supervisor evaluation. And then thirdly, a position questionnaire, which the employee can submit once a year to the Selectmen, asking for a review of their grade. We've already been through that. But there is a form, which was given to us by Collins. And so I've said to everyone in the building, if you're looking for that, do it through this form. So that's on the OneDrive. And then obviously, we got the employee handbook, let me just describe where we are with that. It started with the inclusion of the new health premium split. We've also done some other changes in, in that. Most importantly, I've integrated the Collins Report and, and performance evaluation with that document that I sent to you, I believe, on Saturday. And so I think that's an important part of it, spent some time with that. And I've also accepted some suggestions that well, among others, the Board of Assessors made. And I guess we'll look for a decision from you maybe next time. One of the recommendations that they made was to clear up in the document, what happens if there's a holiday on a Saturday. Right now, it says you observe it on Friday. And obviously, since that document was last updated, the town closes on Friday, so that's where we are, I'm sure you know what the recommendation is.
Yeah, don't, you know, get the day off. Don't get paid, you know, get the day off.
What?
Open back up on Friday.
Open back up on Friday, so that we can provide the holiday.
Or you don't get paid for the holiday.
That's right, yeah.
That's good, we're good, we're good with that, okay.
So those are the, those are the main points i- in that, in that document, but I think it's almost ready for the Selectmen to sign. So if you'll look, take a look at it, and we'll put it back on for next week. And just let me know, but it's part of this continuing effort to try and improve HR in the town. The Treasury reports that health insurance costs are going to rise 7% in fiscal '23.
I'm seeing nine at my office, and that's down from the 16 before. And keep in mind, since we don't pay the ACA,
Right.
you know, that's probably.
But also because of some of the changes in the workforce, that we don't expect a big impact on our budget, so. At times spent gathering emails and so forth. Also did another conference call in the MPP, I have a lot of stuff for that to share with you later on. ARPA, we've already discussed. Water agreements, you have the template to look at. Barim and Entrez are going to be here this week, at least that's what Barim told me, to set up the electronic calendar. The new microphones have arrived, I know there are people who have complained, certainly to me, that the audio for our meetings is not good. These mics arrived this afternoon. We're not using them tonight because tried setting them up, but not enough time, but we'll have them, and I, I guarantee a much better audio for these meetings and other meetings of other boards in the coming weeks. We have another shared health meeting today.
Hey, Bob, one more question, please, on the Zoom thing.
Yes.
We talked before, I said a no doubt, saying, we sometimes have two meetings going at the same time. Are we looking to get duplicate equipment, are we looking to something like, you know, we have a meeting up here, there's a meeting in the Melville Room at the same time?
Because the Melville, Melville Room is smaller venue, I think, and, and because other boards now have Zoom accounts, I think we can use the mic that we were using here for meetings downstairs.
They do have other accounts, I know for advisory, Carol uses her personal account a lot, so.
Conservation has, has that, and they're using.
Not to make it a long process, I mean, they can just use the owl as a mic on it.
True. Spare TV or something. Could be downstairs.
Okay, I'm starting to track ATM articles. I have two currently.
I thought we had a request for the excavator.
Well, we got the excavator.
Okay, I'll add that. But I've, I've added so far, procedure for filling vacancies. And also, the fire chief would like a special act for the one firefighter who is over 65. In order to keep him on the staff, special act is required.
Well.
And also FEMA.
The town meeting has to approve it.
Yes.
And then we have to go to the legislature.
Legislature.
And then we have to amend our insurance contract.
Be a special act.
So.
Well, he asked the question, would that require a physical every year? The answer to that would be yes.
Yeah, don't you need another shot, the NPL, on the warrant as well?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
We do. And finally, FEMA is trying to shower the town with money.
Bloodtown or? Bloodtown or Massachusetts?
I think Massachusetts Town, among others. It's, it's unusual. The, the MIMA representative who initiated the call to me about a month and a half ago lives and works in New Mexico. And we did, we've done three Zoom calls in the last two weeks, trying to come up with.
Bruce is gone. Bruce was, Bruce was MIMA, is this FEMA or MIMA?
She works for MIMA.
Wow.
In New Mexico, and I said, how does that happen? She told me today that the state has contracted with her company to do the work that was done in the past by Bruce. So we're trying to work up a project there, I had a conversation with Jane today about it. Their orientation is mostly COVID-related, but we're, we're trying to come up with some things that we can do. These would be new purchases, new projects between now and the cutoff time, which is April 1st, April Fool's Day. Have ideas?
Certainly, the number's dropping to, what was the number, three?
Three.
Three. Report to them.
Yes, I mean, it was a very positive report to them.
But still to say, if they will cover costs, I don't think it's a bad idea to have that sanitization thing done on a recurring basis. Even whether it takes care of the flu, whether it takes care of whatever, I mean, why not?
We have discussed getting a machine that will work better than the one that we have. And where you, basically, where you can fill it and do a number of rooms, right now, the one thing that we have really doesn't have much of a tank, and you barely get one room done, so it's impractical to use.
Is the one the chief got, is that the?
Yes.
That's, that's, this is that one?
These are the ones that the chief ordered. And we received them, I believe, in 2020.
The school one is bigger or?
School one is a bigger one, yes, we're looking at something with that kind of capacity. So I think that would be on our list. The parameters are 3,300 to 150,000. And we can see if we can come up with proposal or a project, let's say, call it, that would benefit the town in coping with COVID.
What's their criteria for reimbursements? What, what do they have a limit? Not dollar limit, but like, what can we do? I know it says COVID reimbursements, yeah. Do they have guidelines?
Yes, they're primarily interested in PPE. Any other measures, I mean, you can buy masks. She told me you can buy gowns. I said evening gowns, and she said no.
Don, would you check the folder?
That's it.
Two permits for the senior center. The, the one that we discussed previously had not been signed. So they're both in there, and they need signature.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know.
Just working on it.
Yeah, it feels right.
John, I spoke with it locally.
The, um, I'll have the border health report, any luck with, how you doing collecting now the thing?
About at least 20 seconds is probably the deadline, I have a lot of people saying they're ready and.
Oh, great.
So, I've done some work on it, I need to do more.
Okay, are we?
My, excuse me, my last item is that we are almost complete, I think, one more meeting and we'll be complete with the bylaws for the shared health organization. I asked the board to be thinking about our representatives.